Okay. For everyone's attention, calling the order, zoning board meeting for September 19th, 7 o'clock, the Lakeville Public Library. Our first agenda item is the Feroli hearing. Lakeville zoning board appeals acting in accordance with general law, chapter 4A is amended. We'll conduct the public hearing on Thursday, September 19th, in the Lakeville Public Library for Precinct Street upon the petition of Martin and Jessica Feroli. A special permit is requested under section 270-6.1C and section 270-7.4B5 to place a 12 by 20 foot shed within the setback on a free existing nonconforming lot as provided by the Lakeville bylaws, property cited as 1, 2, 3, Precinct Street. Applekin assorted documents were available in the planning department to be viewed by appointment. So, as he opened the hearing, what he really, a couple of memos we received from other boards in town. We received a memo from the planning board dated September 18th. At their Thursday, September 12th meeting, the planning board review above referenced prepared for hearing from the board of deals. The board had no comments regarding this petition. We also received a memo from the Conservation Commission dated September 5th. The commission has reviewed the project, no wetman impact were identified, therefore the commission has no concerns with approval. Okay, who is representing the petitioner?
Is that us?
Yes.
Okay.
Come on up. All right. Bring him to. You're back. What I'm gonna have you do is stand right at that podium.
Okay.
And just, obviously you've submitted an application, so just give us an overview of what you're looking to do.
I am looking to build a shed that measures on 12 by 20 feet and put all the back down.
Okay. And obviously, it is going to be within the established setbacks. The initial question I have is, is there a particular reason we need to place it where it is so that it's within now setback? Is there another option or?
Not really. If we don't put it in the 20 foot, it literally would be right in the middle of the yard. I've been trying to keep as much of the backyard open for the boys to play. So I tried to tuck it off to the side where Linn is at.
Just so you know, I mean normally, I discuss it and review it, but normally convenience isn't a reason we allow people to place something within a setback. Normally it's something where there is no other option, but.
I think no matter where we put it, it would be breaking one of the setbacks.
Oh, yes. Well, then that's a better answer than.
Oh, sorry!
For the boys to be able to play. Have any women just have questions?
Yes. What is the distance to the other side property line from the house?
Oh, falling back some. Are you about to touch about 100 and touch? How was about the same as though like actually stick 1015 maybe?
I'd say, I mean you're 15 at most or 50 on this side.
Yeah. The only problem, I can't put it on that side in the septic is running all over here. That sides out because of the septic, right? Okay.
In the septic field or septic field in the back or?
It's in all the way in back. Yeah, okay. I'm gonna put you on the spot. They have, they have any other real options?
None, not really, because if you go much further back, what they're gonna be in the septic system, and if they go feet away, so it's, if this is a 10 foot setback, it's gonna be right there. It's gonna be right in the middle of the thing. The only problem I have is be aware of the fact that your driveway comes in on that side. Your septic is 27 years old, looks like, 20, 20 years, it was built in 2001. Most septic systems, they're good there 25 years.
Okay.
So by putting that, are you putting it on the slab or?
Is did I be on, did I put concrete footing and then box? So it'll be, it won't, and stuff and then?
It's not gonna move, but let's say you have to, no, it's not my problem. If you, if you have to move, if the septic is replaced, which is going to, you might be eating up the spot where you might, so, but be aware of the fact that that's what's going to happen.
Okay.
We get your septic set, need replaced about every 25, 30 years, so.
Okay.
Yes.
No, I don't know the. Do you have any questions? Any one in the audience have any couple comment or questions? Thank you guys.
I make the motion, we approve the project.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? I oppose, motion carried unanimously. It's approved.
Thank you.
Kathy, tell them what happens next.
So we have 14 days to do the paperwork, and that's submitted to the town clerk, but it stays for 20 days in case there are any appeals. If there's no appeals, she signs off on it, I'll call it back to you, and then go pick it up and go record it.
Perfect.
Good luck. Thank you, you're welcome.
I'm gonna heat myself up.
You and the child can leave run.
Yes. Someone decided about getting your furthest.
Did he call you Superman?
I'm sure he called me Superman.
Okay, the next agenda item is the residents of the St. LeBaron Hills LLC continue from last, last month. So, counsel, why don't you bring us up the date as to where we are, and I know we've asked you to consider making some changes. And yes, I know you also have a traffic study that we did receive back from our consultant. Unfortunately, he is not available tonight, so I'd prefer to get enough data commute for us so we can figure out next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And yes, it's actually probably beneficial that the traffic consultant is not here, because the proposed changes that we're gonna make, some of them affect that, affect the traffic. So, as the board knows, we were here on a couple of occasions, and we've heard a lot of comments, and we listened to the opinions of the board, other town officials and residents, and we recognize what the major concern were. And we thought the major concern was that we were proposing three four-story buildings, and one of them was right on Precinct Street. Fronted right up onto Precinct Street. And it was believed that that was out of character to the rural neighborhood of Precinct Street. So as a result, we are gonna be requesting some significant revisions to our original project. So what I'd like to do first is pass out to the board, but if the board remembers, we start this process when we do a different phase, we started with a modification request. So we sent months ago a notice of project change. So I would like to give to the board an amended notice of change, pass it out, and then I'll explain to you what these.
You just wanna go. But you must go to do. He needs one better, I'm gonna see if he will. You can make a nice.
You?
So I'd like to summarize the requests. I'm not gonna do it in the order that's on the sheet, because that's the same order of the original request. I wanna go take the order of importance. The first, and probably one of the most significant requests is that our request to increase the number of units by 36 is withdrawn. We are not asking for any increase in the number of units. We're gonna keep to the original 386 approved number of units. And as you'll see on my, our second request, the way we get to that is if you remember, we were proposing three four-story buildings, and one of those buildings was right up on Precinct Street. We're revising our quest, the request now to be two four-story buildings, and also requesting, the request to construct a four-story building on Precinct Street is withdrawn. You'll see when we go over the revised site plan, which that Jason will do for us, you'll see that now the building will be 225 feet from, from Precinct Street. And you'll also see that there'll be a significant natural tree zone, buffer zone, tree buffer zone, and as Jason will go over, that will be supplemented by additional screening. And the way that can be done is, my client now owns the single-family dwelling that's at 84 Precinct Street, which is where the, the third building was going to be. He's gonna keep that, he's gonna keep it as a single-family residential zone, but we'll be able to establish a significant buffer zone, deeded no-cut zone. And if you go out and look at the property, it's very significantly tree, with trees up to 4 feet in, in height. And that, along with the additional landscaping that Jason's gonna show us, we believe will sufficiently screen the, the building, the two buildings that will be built from the, from Precinct Street. The request, we also made a request to add additional parcels of land on Fern Avenue into the comprehensive permit. That request remains, we're still gonna add land, but less land, because again, remember, we were gonna add that single-family dwelling parcel into the permit. We don't need to do that anymore, because that's not gonna be part of the project. There will be, as I said, deeded no-cut zone on that, but it's not part of this comprehensive permit. And then the other request is, we're just modifying our request in regard to the use of Fern Avenue. And what we're gonna basically say is, access on Fern Avenue will be whatever the zoning board decides is appropriate. And what we believe, and if you think about it, there, there are three options for that access. Option number one could be, which would be unlimited, ungated access to the entire project over Fern Avenue. So that would be unlimited access to anyone in the development or in the town. So no gate, no limit. You can go from one end of the development out to Fern Avenue. That's option number one. Option number two is basically what was originally approved. So to refresh your memory, the original comprehensive permit stated the following. The secondary, of course, it was gonna be secondary then, even though we now have, have a secondary access, but it said, "The secondary limited means of access shall be paved and gated. The Lakeville Fire Department must approve the design of the gate. Access will be limited to the residents of the project via a card reader, and emergency personnel, who shall be provided with suitable means of remotely activating the gate. Maintenance of the gate shall be the sole responsibility of the applicant." So that would be the second means of access. Gated access, the residents would have access to it with a card reader, the public would not have access to that. The third option is that Fern Avenue would be the, the entrance, the exit out to Fern Avenue will be emergency access only. Fire Department, Police Department will be the only ones that will be able to use it. Fern Avenue would be used as access only for the two apartment buildings that we're proposing. So those are the three options, and my client has said, basically, we'll leave it up to the zoning board. Whatever you feel is in the best interests of the town and the residents that are out there. You tell us which one you want, we'll do it, this, when it comes to the final plans. So what I'd like to do now is ask Jason to go over the revised plans. And what we hope to achieve to know is that we're asking for the board just to approve our concept, which is going to be the two four-story buildings, no additional units added to the, to the project. That would allow us to go to the next step, which is engineering. And of course, we haven't engineered the project yet because we don't have an approval, we don't know what concept is acceptable to the, to the board. So Jason, can you go through the project, please?
How you doing? I'm Jason Young, Bush from Outback Engineering. And Bob mentioned, this is the, the original layout that I said, board at the last appearance, where we had the three buildings. One of the buildings was close to Precinct Street, there were two, obviously still farther back. We had parking going up pretty much adjacent to Lot 51, to the last house for Phase 3 in LeBaron Boulevard. And access was on Fern Ave, one close to the other side in MoShram, and one close to now Precinct Street. So as Bob has mentioned, that has now been revised significantly, was a, the building along Precinct Street was no longer there, and removed, and the closest building to Precinct Street, now 225 meter away. And again, with parking over here has been removed, and again, to that existing house that's, to be construction might just include that Lot 51, and shopping too, Mohammed, never being maybe a dog park or just landscape. We have a landscape plan yet, that shows, that should be a landscape at the moment, but depending on what the, the community wants to do for that, we'll have to cut it. You have dog park, or just playground, or helping that be utilized for everyone, kind of thought. So this is the first building with the plan to be in the applicant homes, Alice 84 Precinct Street. We're already advertising to be supplemented, along with the existing vegetation there, the better screen, this building, again, 225 feet from Precinct Street. And then we also have vegetation on the side, vegetation for the entrance, so it's pretty up for our dad. And then we got back though then, and the existing lot Lot 51, the landscape moving along areas, could create a night buffer zone, came down last Austin Phase Street, and then the photovoltaic. So I've pretty much covered everything. I guess we'll get into file site design, once the concept gets approved, I'm gonna call it, we've got rough schematics on the doing this, I think like for upgrading, to make sure everything that we have shown, we'll work, but we just need to finalize that, do a definitive image, designs.
So Jason, Bob, you mentioned additional screening. What would that, Mr. Chairman? I know you mentioned landscaping, but.
So we have the tree line that shows along the back property there, but we're proposing more along our pavement. The giant arborvitus, provide an evergreen screen, so you have the taller trees, which also have the giant pumpevites divide vegetable here around.
Jason, can you point out where there's substantial existing?
This is all wooded here, and this is all wooded here. It gets a little thin right there, but again, we're proposing to supplement that with addition. It's all along our control party, building in that open hood, bringing it as a machine.
Yeah. So what are you proposing then for buffering between the first building is Abbey Street? As I see your Jason, body of the greenest tree was the buffer.
Correct. That's just a driveway that comes out of Abbey Street, so we also have proposed plantings there. The existing tree line will remain as dust it can, but we'll work up trees, we're gonna be planting trees back in that. Like another arborvitus said.
You have a four-story building, right?
Yeah. So that's pretty substantial for someone, well, that's the only Abbey Street that people would have. Again, that house is not here, that house that Abbey Street, think back to, way back here, division out a house opposite that thing, the closest houses from that building three or something, 400 feet away. This is just that driveway that was.
Can you note that questions?
Where the open area is on Precinct Lot, would anything kind of tree until, I'm not?
Yeah.
Anything out of it, aside from this border, the sides along that park, I'm not proposing anything, but I will see if you open any kind of enhancements that performance, if they can be advocated.
Obviously, we have a landscape architect on that, though, could definitely provide additional, if that's something that one is interested.
Do you have, though, like specimens of trees that are, that are just in this pine and oak? What do you guess, you, I'm a journey?
I would mean, I think it's too far.
They didn't put tall trees, so.
We've measured them, that you're 40 by?
Approximately 40 feet. And, and remember, this house there, okay, is a single-family house. That single-family house is gonna remain. Mohammed is the owner, he may sell it, he may rent it, but we're gonna do two things in regard to the, to the house. We're gonna put in an informational covenant, so that the people who buy that understand that there is, let's see if it hasn't commenced yet, that there is to be a, in a, a 40B complex right behind it. And we're gonna create a substantial no-cut zone that will be a deeded restriction. And yeah, it, it looks like in the area directly behind that, where it comes in, we may need to do a little bit more landscaping there, because that's really the only part that's COVID, this F1 sector. But don't forget, there's a house there too, which is trees.
Right. Can you describe the no-cut zone? What does that encompass? Every tree or?
Well, yeah, I mean, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll come up with, remember again, we haven't engineered this, because we don't, but we'll come up and propose a, and we can show it right on a plan, we create a green space area, where the restriction will say that other than, than the natural cleaning, cleaning up debris and such, that that area will be left in its natural state. They can't cut the trees down, they have to remain. And we'll work on the location of it, we'll put it on a plan to show you how wide it's going to be. But it's essentially, we can, we can come pretty close to saying that the existing area there will be, will be kept.
Anyone else have any additional questions? Amy, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Amy Clustel, turn counsel. I think my only comment, which I might, I think it's, you know, more up to your board, but it looks like from my adding, that they had 162 parking spaces? That's what I added that, oh, is it on the sheet? Oh my God, I just, I added it all listed.
Total parking.
And clearly my math isn't that great, because I was wrong. So.
Well, you're an attorney.
I know, I know. So 164 spots, and there are 72 units, right?
Yep.
So that's over two spots per unit, which, which is.
Good.
Good, or maybe, I don't, just, I guess I'd have to go back and look and see how, what, what you guys normally approve, but if maybe we don't need all this parking, I'm not sure if we need all that.
Cut down the pave there.
Yes.
The parking spots, you know, have you allocated in prior?
Two, for you, for you.
Let me try to get a larger visitor parking and torn and up, but seems like you already need up some extras.
Any parking issues right down, any of the other prior?
To the he's pointed, we don't need to pay as much, probably not that much, but if there are issues with people not having parking spots, and in the previous segments of this, would you just make sure we have, if we have additional, and if we have all the two as an average, that would be additional to the prior.
Even if one of those rows of, of 16, even if one of the rows of 16 is eliminated, you could, the whole, you would be pushing the, the projects away from the, the lots down here.
You don't have any here?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, generally, we'd probably instead just take it out one of the rows, because then still need the access, we take out, chuck whatever, something is, that'll end that one.
Well, whatever, yeah. Something to think about. That, that's it. Yeah. No, I, I think that it's a, I think it's a substantial change in, in the right direction from the comments that.
Yes. Obviously, there were listening boards. Anything additionally you want to add at this point before I open it up for public?
Well, as I mentioned, and as you mentioned, that your traffic engineer is not here, I think it's important to get back to him and say, we're no longer adding the additional.
Just, I have no, at this point, as far as traffic goes, the initial study was based on the number we now have. So I, we move ourselves to provide the change back to the consultant, who's our engineer is doing our peer review, advising what's going on, and to revise any comments he has given us at this point. And from the beginning, we had a draft study in the past, and on this with the number of units you're gonna have, so, he already does the study, we're gonna drop the number of units. So I, I think it's our responsibility to at least, you know, review his comments, and if there's anything substantial that needs to be done, we should refer to your actions.
John, something to add as well? On the screen now is, on the right is the proposed four-story Phase 6 building. On the left is the already constructed occupied Phase 5 building, and you could see, for the to scale, it's not a great difference in height between the two buildings, just because of the way the architecture on the bigger building, the taller building, and it shrinks down the height even.
Please, do you have anything else? See if you have any couple comment? All right, you guys are good for now. Anyone in the audience have any comments? So, you do, all right, come on up and state your name and address.
Steve Jinks, 70th Baron Boulevard, Unit 12, Lakeville. So I, the question I have is, I see all this plan for screening, you keep Precinct separate, but there is nothing here from the people that live here, and there's, there's a lot of, what I'm talking about, Lot 51, next to the apartment lot in this little triangle area. It seems, I don't know, Lot 51 is occupied, I don't know they could hear, but it would seem that they would expect some sort of screening from a substantially tall building that's too close to them. I don't know what, what the consensus of the community is, but I can tell you the discussions I've heard about, before this little triangle disappeared and is now back. before this little triangle disappeared and is now back, when that was still there, with the prior, prior plan, the discussion I heard in the community was, we really need a playground. And I don't know if that's enough acreage or square footage to put anything but a swing set in, I don't know. It's hard to visualize, but we need that worse than we need a dog park or more landscaping. So that would be, that would be my input, and from the people I've talked to, I've heard a lot of that sentiment, the kids are playing in the street, and we don't, we don't really want that. Kyle?
I'm going to finish, we're going to take.
Right, okay. The other thing, this is, this is not directly related to this, but it's related to the builder. We were, now whether he did it himself, or whether his realtor did it, but we were promised access to a pond, to the pond out behind the residential buildings. And so what I would ask to have that, have that promise fulfilled would be to gravel a path out to the pond and build a dock there, so that you actually have some, some access to the, to the pond, rather than just access in name only, because right now, you, you got to go stomping through the ticks and weeds and everything else to get there. And then when you get there, it's just a sheer drop into the pond, there's not much you can do with it. Other residences have, you know, stairs down and docks and that kind of thing. It seems that that would be a reasonable request to have them do that and, and get that, get that committed to by, for, by someone besides the realtor. And then the other, the other piece of it is, there's been a lot of back and forth about trees, where they should be and where they shouldn't be, and I don't know whether they should go on the, the backside where the walkway is along the baron, or if they should go on the other side of the street, or go on both sides. But I don't see any plans in that part of the whole project for trees. And trees is what makes it, makes a bunch of building to own for the community. So those are the things that I came here and I hoping to get resolved. And I would, I would also like to say that I'm glad that the builder has listened to the community and board and is really trying to come up with a workhorse solution, and I, I applaud them for that, so. That's everything I know.
I think we all do, so. Couple of things that I want to confirm with Amy first, as far as the screening goes for the existing development, because I believe that's the area he's talking about, we talked about precinct street, but the existing development, whether it's.
I'm talking about either along here.
Yeah, yeah.
The leash desk.
Yeah, so, I guess my question is, if you're in the development, I mean, we can ask, but I'm not so sure how much.
And, and they're showing some screening, so yeah, I think.
As far as the, hang on one second, as far as the playground versus the dog park, that's, that would not pervive you, or that's something?
No. It appears that a dog park might be offered, and, and if there's room to switch it to a playground, I'm sure they would be willing to do that, but that would be up to them to propose to us.
Right, so we, we can express your concerns, sir, but we don't necessarily have the authority.
We don't desire.
Not to do a playground versus a dog park, but your point, they've listened to us at this point, so I'm sure what you're asking, or they're, they're listening to it, again, the same thing with, with the pond. You know, I don't, isn't like, we can't force them to build a path down there for you at this point, we're talking there, but I would hope that they would be willing to work on any of these issues, so.
Jason?
I know you want to make a comment.
Well, I just wanted to give some numbers to, to help with what he was asking. That triangle piece is a quarter of an acre, so it's a very significant size, that could be, that's what we applicant, you know, for playgrounds. We've talked about, you know, we have a landscape being shown in there and green space, provide a buffer from that house on Lot fifty-one, because originally, there was parking in there, we removed that, and it was a bit to the board at the last hearing. So we removed that, provided landscaping, green space, the Glenn, Mohammed and I were talking in the lobby previously, but maybe dog park or something that the residents want, maybe he can stick hard.
I mean, that's, that's, that's one idea, a playground for a dog park, whatever the board chooses, we'll, we'll talk to the neighbors.
I was just going to say, that's not on us, you probably need to figure that out.
We, we, we know that, I've, I've been hearing, even though, growing up as a kid, we used to play soccer on the street and the water also, but anyways.
Until you fall down.
So, so, so there are a couple of areas within the neighborhood. The, the security can feel that the community is where a couple of reaching thing for the treatment plant. The community now comes to keep mowing it and then cleaning it, and it's a big, actually, area now that was all lawn. We create the sitting area next to our radio box, I can't see it. Now, as far as access to the barn, there is a ton of access for the barn, and I think what the gentleman informed us, Veronica, can you measure the barns? This is, see, oh, so, so we created, so we created a big patio area with some landscaping, so that the community can get together for a block or, you know, leaving the store walls. It's a very attractive area, this is our main office, and this is a reaching field that now it's being very big. I've got, so somebody wants to play ball, so we like this, you know, that's how they, but they can all back to the partners, right? So what the gentleman told us was saying that, you know, they need access to the ponds. Yeah, we do have a couple of points of feed that's, what, what the probably, all of those houses, the lots and here. So everything around the barn is fully by the community, so all that, that lawn that's there is owned by the community, and the community has access to it. So if someone wants to go down there, even though it's just uncomfortable here in the backyard of other people, but it's all part of the community, so everything around the pond, at least, at least fifty feet, I guess, that's all actually available on the whole community, with two ways of ingress. One gets here and got this at the end of the condesact here, so the end of the condesact here. You can see this is a better one, and then the east of pond, and then there is another one here, section or one that leads to the area. And I agree, once you get to the stadium, it's a steep drop, but technically, somebody can walk down here, and then from there, you can go forward around the farm, at least on opposite side of the plaza. So those are available to the community, but the neighbors might not like it, or if you got, prefer to look like it, Pat Sumper is invisible here.
Well, fortunately, that's beyond our, so.
There.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, did you have something else, Jason?
Yeah.
Laser point, okay. You come on up to the, because the mic, the Blake came.
So, the question I have is, he's saying that there's, that all of that on access from behind all those houses is available to everybody in the community. The question I have is, so were the, the docks and stairs and whatnot, is that built on community property and not on?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, so at this point, I think the question is, if people are doing stuff on community property that they shouldn't do, again, that's outside of what we're.
Yeah, that's.
You may need to handle that with the associate.
I just wanted to get clarification, if that's what it was. But like I've said, it would be nice, where there are accesses, to actually make a more public access that you don't feel like you're sneaking across somebody's backyard to get there.
So, anyway, any other comments?
I'm at the time, I'm at least twenty-eight, it's my understanding that the waste treatment plant, the filtration system needs to be upgraded already. So can you please provide some insight to how, going forward, it's going to accommodate increase with this additional building?
So, not, hang on a second, just, on what can respond to that, just, you know, with that, the next step after we, the full concept is to have them bring us back full engineering plans, that's going to have to be accounted for, and we are going to make sure that what they're going to do is going to be able to be handled by the treatment plant. So go ahead and respond, but just to give you the assurance that if our peer engineer, if our peer review engineer looks at it and says, listen, you guys are doing stuff, and this is going to force that to fail, or you're going to have a problem, they're going to have to fix.
Well, it was already a pool, this is only a few years old, and it's already having issues, so whatever happened, whatever grease hands or whatever happened there, it took place, and it's, it needs already to be upgraded, so that's, that's an issue.
Mr. Chairman, that, that's nasty EP.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that's, that's outside of our scope, nasty EP, that's not even a border health, Lakeville issue, nasty EP is responsible for that, so.
Yeah, I look back on this part, you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. The treatment plant was built to accommodate sixty-six thousand gallons per day. Today, we're close to two hundred eighty units per day, our average day consumption, consumption is sixteen thousand more gallons per day. So we have around fifty thousand gallons per day. Technically, the, the existing treatment plant can accommodate probably five hundred more units, based on, on, on what's, what's there now, having close to three hundred units, and we're only looking at sixty thousand gallons a day. Now, there are two ways to check that. Our water meter is leading the, almost the same amount of water that's going into the treatment plant. And somebody can say, oh, which I heard those days, that, oh, there could be some leaks somewhere. Well, there are no leaks, because the water meter is bringing onto the community around eighteen thousand gallons per day, and the treatment plant is processing sixteen thousand gallons per day. Now, that doesn't include the summary, because people have irrigations and stuff like that, we, we monitor it and do a job. There was an issue in the field, that's what I mentioned, now the Jesus game may date by the community, the community, and now, and, and again, the community may days, the treatment plant allowed some leaks to grow, and that entered some lines that allow some of the, the fluid to actually seep to the surface. And my understanding is being covered it now. And this is not a developer issue, because while the homeowners, a participation issue, but they are dealing with it, once they found what the, what the issue was. But again, once we're adding to that unit, the EP is going to look at it again, they're going to make sure that it's, it's quite, it actually, it can accommodate more units. We do have plans to actually have sub systems for those facilities as well, so we don't give them into that, into the treatment plant. Even though if we add the seventy-two units that we're foreposing today, basically would reduce the cost for running the street there by twenty percent or twenty-five percent, could all the owners that are there, so it's a, it's beneficial to the community. So add our units to that shit with that, but we don't have to actually, we do have good soils, no water table, we can easily put sub tech systems.
Cut, then. Anyone else?
Okay, so my next question for the board is, obviously, they've made some significant changes to what they were initially asking for in the GAD's project take, is are we good with instructing them to go forward at this point and shore up their engineering, so we can get those plans and we will move them up to our peer review, and let them come back and give us comments, so we can move for the next phase, I guess, I would say. For me, this is a material change, so I would fight to have more time to review this, but I think this is a step of our impression.
I had these big discuss, so. Says to you, I'm comfortable to say yes, continue forward, and then.
Again, this is, we're not approving it, okay, we're just saying, listen, get this, get some, I would fight for a time to, no. But last twenty minutes, just public this, did plan, but that's, a few more ways to the death, type aspect.
If you do it off of this, what would they mean?
Any more to have? Comments or?
I like the fact that there's been a significant reduction in the footprint, it's still concerns about the height.
So Amy, when it comes to the height, how much influence of flexibility or whatnot do we have, do we have any tools in our justice?
Not a lot, not unless the, not unless the fire department has concerns and, and you know, that, like, they'll just purchase a ladder truck, so. It's probably, I'm assuming that.
Kind of tough to say, you can't get up there after we just spent four, whatever it was on a ladder truck.
Oh, the, the side by side, I'll figure this, yeah, that's actually, that's a good photo. Did we bring to show what the actual differences, it's not a lot. I think the man's side, roof, flat roof, helps. The one on the left, it is a lot of vaulted attic space, a lot of asphalt roof on the left. You, you could actually add to the point that, up on the right, it's a massive design.
Well, yes, you get an indoor smock, black.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, I think, I think it's moving in the right, right direction.
Chris?
Yeah, I'm happy with the design, as long as you just show them the escaping concerns, that it raises a possibility of additional freezing that out on the farm already, then, yeah, I can handle it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think there's much more, and Amy will correctly come wrong, I don't think there's much more we can ask them to, to scale back or pull back at this point, I understand people aren't, they're not falling in love with the fact that it's four stories, but because she's point, it's, you know, you can hear it too, what's there now, it's, it is higher, but it's not significantly higher. They're not looking for additional units at this point, they're basically telling the town, you guys tell us what you want us to do with the secondary access. Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with moving forward, again, when it comes to screening, when it comes to parking spots and things like that, this is just moving the plan forward, we can still say, you know, you need to tweak this, you need to do that. Yeah, conditions to make sure, I'm just, I'm not so.
Mr. Junior?
Waiting.
I think from what we've heard, we're comfortable with going forward with our engineering plans at this, at this time. We know there are a lot of remaining issues, parking, screaming, et cetera, but as far as the basic concept, I think we're okay with going forward at this time.
And once the more definitive plans are done, it'll help clear up any additional questions that, that the board may have.
Fair enough, I guess you just call that reading the crowd, right? So at this point, unless anyone else has any questions, or anything in particular they'd like to see from the petitioner? Is it regards to this stage?
Yeah, yeah. On a, Fern Avenue in fact, so at the last meeting, or one of the last meetings, it was discussed that the maintenance of Fern Avenue belongs to the people on either side of it. And in the rest of the development, that's all well and good, because it's all within the development, so the road is maintained by the development, by the, by the owners. Now, we've got a situation where that road is not maintained by the, by, by the town, and half of it might be, half of it would be maintained by Fern, and what if the fellow on the other side of the road doesn't? Says, hey, I, I don't have a lot of traffic going up and down there, so that's my question, is how, how, how do we make sure that Fern is properly maintained with the ownership situation the way it is?
So what I'm going to respond to that is, unfortunately, that's the way private road situations work. road situations work, it's not a town excepted road, I don't, the developers under no obligation to respond to that concern or question, or maybe they want to come back and respond later, but I'll leave it up to them if they want to make a comment on it, yeah. Okay. And if you want to wait until later, tell me, you'll address it at the next meeting.
That'll be something we'll address as we go on.
Okay.
Could I just want to make sure the question about?
Yep, yep.
If there are clarifying questions asked, the gate location, have you seen that on the plans?
We didn't get that finite, and I know the Phase 3 plans that it showed a possible location, but for the Phase 6, we didn't, it's not shown.
If I may make a suggestion in regard to that, in that engineering is going to take a few months, that perhaps we can come back in a month and we could get direction from the board and the input from the residents as to, as to which of the three options they would, would like to have. We haven't shown the gated, but that's, that's something that we can add at, at any time. We'd be happy to discuss that at the, at the next meeting and you could get input from the residents as to what they want, whether they want it gated, whether they want it full access, or whether they want it closed off.
So I do have one question on that, just to clarify, I understand option one, open access, basically that's it, it's an open road, anybody can go up and down, come in and out, gated, pretty obvious, you're going to have a gate there, we're not sure where it's going to be at this point, but you would need card to access it, and fire department would need access to it as well. The third option as far as emergency access only, which I understand that, but then you would also made reference, other than the apartment buildings, is that because the gate would be beyond those buildings?
Yes.
So they would be outside the gate?
Yeah.
And if you wanted to go into the remainder of the community?
The gate would be up off the circle.
So that's a good question at this point, that's.
So it would be either in this location, this is the access that we have to add, or it would be somewhere here. Now, that does create a logistical problem because if you put your GPS on the value mark and you're approaching it from Precinct Street, it turns you down for an app, and that's a problem that the fire department and ambulances were having. When it wasn't, it wasn't stepped paved, it was under construction, they were asking us to please make sure that it's open all the time. At one time, we blocked it because we wanted to not to have traffic coming, coming in and out, they were having issues that their GPS is sending them there. So they were asking us to open it, make sure it's always accessible to, to emergency vehicles. The other issue that I heard the neighbors speak, since the GPS is going to send you this way, you have that Amazon that reveals that comes in and then there's a gate, what do they do? They have to back up and if there's a seat for cars behind you, that can be a logistical nightmare, you know, like. So that's something maybe should stay as a 15 foot driveway you like, and mostly everything is E-Bus, and then the neighbors can use it. We have signs that says no through traffic, only authorized traffic. I'm not sure if we're getting any cuts through traffic, probably Don, unit in the community, are we getting, do you see a lot of cut through traffic from Precinct to 79? So we're not getting any cut through traffic, we have multiple signs that says, you know, only authorized vehicles past this, and emergency vehicles past this point. So for now, it's waiting the way it is, otherwise we kind of like have to put two gates, one at the tip here and one there, so hopefully if a truck comes in, they can somehow turn it out and go back, especially that the GPS is sending them that way.
So, to clarify for the record, I mean, first thing we'll do is we are going to ask for the fire chief, lots of police as well, I'm sure this is significant for them, but fire chief would probably want to comment on if he has a preference from a safety standpoint, an accessibility standpoint. And then at that point?
Police.
Well, yeah, police as well, yeah. That point, we'll listen to the residents and the community of the town and, you guys have said it, you're leaving it up to the town, whatever the town wants to do, you'll go, right?
Exactly, and we would give a talk to the neighbors some more, there are multiple associations within the community, we'll reach out, actually, there's a meeting next week here, I believe, right? It's in this, so we're discussing with them as well.
Well, for those who are watching on Lakeham, I have heard comments, even people outside of the community who live on Precinct or in that area, that have raised questions or concerns, and I think they're concerned about the cut through that you referenced and somebody in the audience saying there isn't, yeah, I don't think it's as much of a draw, but as people think it would be to cut through.
Don is our mayor, so he knows everybody and this is.
I don't think Don appreciates you calling him the mayor, he's shaking his head, so.
All right, the president, I was talking to the one guy, I didn't say the mayor.
So, okay, so we need to come up with a solution for that, we'll reach out to the fire department and police department. We have no additional questions or anything else we'd like to come back for next time, I think we'd be a motion to continue until our October.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth meeting, anyone want to make that motion?
Sure.
I make a motion to continue October 17th. The second, so further discussion, Al Javer, I propose motion to the C17.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He better do it different. It's a chase of. He better keep. Five, five. Tell us. It's a hundred. Do you know? Yeah, carry it past. Forgot he's used to be. It's certainly to turn off, monitor or just keep it on a bit. Yeah. Uh, yeah. Leave it on. And you're a will. All right. Maybe we can study. Are you up? In that two, it's an hour too. Wait, or, I mean, it's usually, yeah. Yeah. So they're. Yes. You're going to be a backseat.
It's game time, though.
Yeah.
What's that? Game time. You had no illusion it was going to be untie a fortune. This is all with this in the second half. Right, you're right. Here's game like the early, but Jerry, we'll catch this second half, I would like my dog.
Is Jeff back?
Come on back in, Jeff.
So you're, so you're just missing two, or you're really, don't.
No, but it's a. I already counted. Jeff couldn't get away. He's had the whole summer.
At least you don't leave it all.
Oh, I told you. I'm going to spend some on four.
You'll get number of years, John.
Okay. You're going to get something, I think.
Yeah. And. I think the board is. Did you guys agree? Pretty recent, I'm glad. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah. Around me. I've been, uh, I've been. Does it fool you? Just saying, I don't even want to hear it. It's driven me away, monitor, better cause of the free. Yeah. What juice? We've all been. Yeah. It's. It's.
I hear. Okay, our next agenda item is the Cranberry Heights residences 40B application. So, Lakeville's only going to appeal, acting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 40B, as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, September 19, 7 p.m., Lakeville Public Library, toward Precinct Street. On the petition of Lakeville owner LLC, a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 40B is requested, you can start a 200 unit fixed income multifamily project property size 43 Main Street. The application and assorted documents were able to be viewed at the planning department by appointment, and I will say for the record, environmental partners has already been engaged as the town's peer review engineer for this project. So, I am going to read a couple of memos into the record, and then I will turn it over to the applicant to make their presentation. So, the planning board at their September 15th meeting, oh, excuse me, the memo is dated September 15th, at their Thursday, September 12th, being the planning board review the above referenced petition for hearing from the board of appeals. After a lengthy discussion of what we'd like the zoning board to keep in mind that they're still pursuing expanding the 40R zone due to the financial benefits for the town as well as the developer. So yes, I heard that through the great find that you're still talking to the planning board as well to see if we can come up with a option B, which is a little more financially better for the town. We also have a document from the Lakeville Fire Department, I'll hold up on that one, I can read that into the, into the record later. So at this point, who is presenting on behalf of the petitioner?
For the record, my name is John Louis with Rhino Capital, I'm joined here this evening by a rather large project team, so I'll go around the room and just introduce everybody to start off. Sam Randall, also from Rhino Capital, Bob Madder, our local land use council, Brittany Gesner, our lead civil engineer, Andrew Stevens, our architect, Jeff Angler, our development consultant, Matt Keeler, transportation engineer, and Bill Madden, our landscape architect. So as you mentioned, we're here this evening to present to you all the comprehensive permit application for the Cranberry Heights residences, it's a 200 unit multifamily building, covered under Mass General Law Chapter 40B, located on about a six acre property within the former Lakeville State Hospital. So, this presentation here this evening is really meant to be sort of a comprehensive, overarching, general presentation on our entire development here at the Cranberry Heights. It's the first of several hearings, we will all have an opportunity to dive in deeper on specific elements of the project, but really the goal here is to kind of present an all encompassing view of the project. So as I mentioned, you'll hear from all of the folks here with us this evening. So, before we get into the specifics of the development, I do think it's important that we sort of set the stage a little bit on where this property is located, as I'm sure everybody here, both on the board and viewing on Lakeham and in attendance, knows this property. It's a 49 and a half acre property located about a half mile south of the Middleborough Lakeville Line and the 495 Route 105 interchange, it's bound by Rhode Island Road and Main Street and was formerly home to the Lakeville State Hospital and been operated by the Commonwealth for almost a century before it was abandoned in 1992. Several redevelopment efforts have been attempted here and unfortunately, none successful, and as such, the buildings and the property has set generally vacant and abandoned for the better part of 30 years. So zooming in a little bit on the existing conditions, there are about six buildings, and I say about because some of the buildings really wouldn't be classified as buildings and more such rubble, but the property is really made up, made up of four main buildings. The building closest to the street, or to Main Street, is the main hospital building, it's a four story masonry structure, it's the building you see most predominantly when you're driving down Main Street. As you move further north into the property, the item labeled number two on this slide here is a three story building titled Dormitory. At its existing condition, it's about 250 feet, give or take, from the closest residential of butter along Rush Pond Road to the west. Moving to the east on the property, labeled number three, is that maintenance building, let me see, there we go, that maintenance building which is seen here, it's a single story, wood structure building and significant disrepair. And then the last major structure is the human services building labeled number four here, and its existing condition, that's a eight story building, roughly 270 feet from the closest residential of butter. So a lot of folks have seen this property, this property is quite high profile, a lot of people know about it, but I don't know if everyone has had the opportunity to actually see what the existing condition is. So, I wanted to provide some images here for everybody that are sort of the next couple slides, just to sort of paint a picture of what the existing conditions really do look like. All these pictures were taken over probably about the last year to year and a half. This picture here is taken from Rhode Island Road looking down towards Main Street, that's the back of the main hospital building that you see in this image. Slide eight, for those of you that have printouts in front of you. This is sort of the same image, just kind of panning, again, you get a good look of that eight story building, again, 207 feet from the closest residential of butter. So as part of this development, we have committed to the complete remediation and demolition of all existing structures in the property. That includes the landfill, there's a 1.12 acre landfill that exists in the rear of the property, online and unpermitted, that was part of the previous hospital use. Again, we have committed to the complete remediation and demolition, paving the way for a master planned mixed residential redevelopment. Tonight, we're here to present on the six or so acres that is the Cranberry Heights residence. However, I think it's important to contextualize that property in relation to the entire master plan, which we've been working on for the better part of a year now, closer, probably closer to a year and a half. So we understood that this project and this property was going to have a lot of eyes on it, and so as such, we really wanted to involve the community during our planning phase. So, we hosted a community engagement meeting in December of 2023 and showcased a plan that we had been iterating on internally for about six months. We had about a little over 75 residents actually in this room here, several members of our project team were here with us this evening, having one-on-one conversations with residents in the public, receiving feedback, having conversations and sort of explaining our program a little bit. From there, we incorporated a lot of that feedback and settled on what is now the master plan redevelopment of this property. The area outlined in blue shows the Cranberry Heights residence and the other two portions of this development, the senior living portion which is located along Main Street and the cottages which are located on the bounds of the property are both under review currently by the Lakeville Planning Board as well as the Conservation Commission. But what I wanted to showcase was really sort of the major change that occurred between our first iteration in December to what is now our current iteration and was last presented in June. What you'll notice, and I think I might be stealing some of Andrew's thunder here, but what you'll notice is, one of the major concerns that we heard from, from residents was the proximity of the multifamily building to the residential of butters along Rush Pond Road. So as such, we really tried to shift that building away from that residential neighborhood, condense and really consolidate that development as best we could, and move it closer towards the commercial and the business area that is, that is Main Street. So with that, I will, I'll turn it over to Andrew.
Great, thank you very much, John. For the record, good evening, everybody. The record, my name is Andrew Stevens with TDT for the architects for the project, and John is correct, he did steal my thunder, but that's okay. Actually, I will restate it because it is very important, I'm going to run through in the next few slides of how we got to the proposals in front of you today. As you can see, this has been, there's been a lot of work done today, we're looking forward to, you know, moving through the process and, and, you know, hearing and taking care of comments going forward. So, I'm going to cover the building design a bit, so, you know, one of the first things we do is locating the building, you know, where should it be placed? As John had mentioned, we've, from the comments from the community meetings, we actually pushed the building farther east, it's, it's about 700 feet away from the nearest residence. Thank you very much. This is more of a close up here, and it's located farther, much farther away than the existing eight story building, in fact, it's seemingly about 140 feet farther away, so. And then also, I'll touch upon this later, but if you notice the building plan, no way it's situated, it's 700 feet away from. it's situated, it's 700 feet away from the nearest residence, and also about the building, you're really seeing the building ends and not, you know, not the bulk of the building facing, you know, facing the nearest neighbors, so. And then the next piece of building design, Fafa Building Design, as they call it, how many stories are we going to do? So there was a very strong desire by the zoning team to be lower than the existing, less stories than the existing eight-story building, but we also want to be mindful of reducing site disturbances and fitting in with the master plan. So we felt that five stories was the sweet spot. We're balancing the items that I said above, you know, a four-story building would have another one-quarter larger footprint, which would mean more site disturbance or mean more impervious surface. So we feel like, you know, this was the sweet spot of the number of stories that we were going to design to, and then, you know, furthermore, as we get in the exterior design, you know, break that five stories down even more and react to its role in the master plan. I'll go to the next slide. So this is probably a good slide. Actually, this is not too good, too. I think you can see this just as well. So we have a building location and a number of stories. So how do we get to the shape of this building? So this is very purposefully done. One of the things we really like to do when we can is work with the solar orientation. So there, if you notice, looking at the plan, there are two courtyards. There's one on the right is east-facing, and it takes on the morning sun, and then the one on the left is west-facing and gets the evening sun. So that provides the residents multiple opportunities for occupying the different courtyards through the day, if you want to be in the sun, if you want to be in the shade. And then Bill will talk about, you know, potential programming opportunities, you can do a pass of a more active, you know, fitness patio on the east courtyard. So here's an image of the ground floor plan. I think this will help me describe how the board, the building had been organized. So in addition to the providing the two courtyards, the way the building bends really allows us to not see any one part of the building, and really the longest facade that exists, and it's still also broken up quite a bit with the ins and outs and the modulation, is the rear facade. So that was purposely, purposeful done. And just to reiterate, you know, on the left side of the plan, the building ends are the ones that are facing the residents. So the building is organizer on a central spine, which contains the main entry to the bottom of the page and resident entry at the top, and we have the common areas, which on your plans is a little more yellow than on, of course, we're yellow, can't really see it on the screen, but the landing area there is the, is that central spine. And we've also expressed this important, more hierarchical spot in the plan on the exterior, which I'll review you shortly. The other advantage of this configuration is we have great connection to the exterior. This will allow for potential views and access through the entire building with natural light coming from each side, and so that's another advantage. Just a little bit about the support spaces. We have a mail package at the front. You'll notice at the bottom of the page, we have a drop-off slash short-term parking area that Brittany will deal with further. And that only accommodates the USPS for the mail delivery, but these days, we were very keen on providing space for Amazon delivery trucks, food service delivery trucks, you know, for eats, and Uber or Lyft pickups and drop-offs. So that's an important part of the operations of the project and keeps those folks out of the regular traveling way. Now, on the plan, to the rear of the building, we have organized some of the more mundane support spaces. We have a main electrical room, which will need to be near the transformer, keeping that out of the entrance view, and the trash. So the proposal has trash and recycling collection eternal to the building. So on each floor, close those elevators, that bank of elevators there, there'll be a trash chute room. The residents will take their trash and recycle, recycling and bring it down to the chute or go down to this room, and there'll be sides to be able to hold that trash until trash day, and then on trash day, it'll be wheeled out. You can see the hatch area just above, on the plan there, that's just above the trash room. So that was designed specifically, or designed to accommodate a trash pickup and also does double duty to accommodate a move-ins and move-outs of the residents. So once again, trying to be thoughtful, keeping the, those vehicles out of the regular travel way, or travel way, excuse me. So this slide, we'll talk about the exteriors. So we're stick with an act of a design. So this design speaks to the other projects, and the master plan was true with the exterior. We have a mix, are proposing a mix of horizontal platform siding, vertical siding, and panel siding, set at different data points to provide some variety and interest. So the left side, how the trim lines move up and down. We'll propose a similar color palette of grays, whites, and blues to relate to other buildings in the master plan. As with any building, hierarchy and variation is important. As you can see, as I mentioned earlier, the central spine has a sort of accent color marking as an important spot in the building design. We have varying roof lines and roof lights that vary, I'm sorry, roof lines that, roof lights that vary, and at the front entry, we're proposing this roof to sort of push out. So just a little moves to create variety, but stick with a sort of traditional element you'd see elsewhere. And then at the ground level, we see here is a closing stone veneer at the common area facades and large windows, you can see letting natural light in, also marking the common areas in support to that, and really tying in how the language is happening at the adjacent senior site, somewhere where a similar approach was stated. So we hope this, we hope these slides sort of demonstrate a good introduction to, you know, the thought and consideration that they put into the building design to date, and we think it's going to provide a great resident experience, and they'll fit in not only with a master plan, but also within the town and Lakeville. With that, I'll pass the load to the next.
My name is Brittany Gesner. I'm a civil engineer for the project. I'll discuss some of the exterior site elements. So on this slide, they can review the vehicular circulation. We are proposing for this portion, this project will be accessed primarily off of what we are referring to as the dog lanes for the property, outlined in the blue following. Down here, there's this part of the property we're proposing will be a primary access for in this building. There is a secondary connector to another portion of the property, but we don't anticipate there'd be a lot of crossover traffic between those two portions. There is a full vehicular loop around the property that we have demonstrated, the largest Lakeville fire truck can maneuver, as well as standard loading trucks and trash trucks. We are proposing approximately 350 surface parking spaces. This project is proposing a 200-unit building, so that's about one and a half stasis per unit on tap for the project. We have proposed EV charging for the project in accordance with the latest energy codes, and we are, as I just mentioned previously, we are proposing a loading area in the rear of the site, which will accommodate both move-ins, move-outs, and trash. The next slide illustrates the utilities for the project. We are proposing that nearly all the utilities will be serviced from that main entry driveway that I pointed out previously and serviced off of Main Street. There will be a fire service that comes into the site and links the building, along with fire hydrants that are strategically located to provide sufficient service around the building. We are proposing electric and telecom will come up this day of access and service in the leader of the site. And then this site is not serviced by Penni Public Sewer, so as part of the master plan, we are proposing a private wastewater treatment plant that will service the entire master plan of the project. We have currently been engaging with DDP throughout the last six months or even longer to design that wastewater treatment plant, that the sewer service for the site will exit the site near the north of the property and travel through the parcel to the north to the wastewater treatment plant on the dividing parcel. The next slide illustrates the stormwater management systems for the project. Because this portion of the project is one component of a larger master plan, we have designed a stormwater management system in consideration of the entire 49-acre property. We did prepare a comprehensive stormwater management report that we submitted along with the submission. That report does contemplate the development of all 49 acres, and we have designed this portion of the project in accordance with the assumptions in that overall master plan stormwater design. We are proposing deep-sum flooded catch basins, as well as a water quality unit, and that will discharge to a surface basin, which will detain and recharge the stormwater. There's also a subsurface stormwater system for coals near the driveway along Main Street. This project will be subject to NITD's Construction General Permit, which will cover construction based stormwater management control. We will prepare a SWIP that will be submitted to the EPA prior to commencement of construction. We do anticipate the bulk earthworks for the full 49 acres of the property will commence at the same time, so our erosion and sedimentation control plan does contemplate disturbance of all 49 acres at once. And with that, I will pass it on to our traffic engineer.
Thanks, Brittany. For the record, my name is Matt Keely, traffic engineer with THB. I'd like to give you just a brief overview of our traffic study, which if you want to take a step back and just mention that our traffic study was comprehensive and incorporates all the components of the master plan into one study. As the chair mentioned, it's currently under review by the Town Square Review of Rhode Island Forest, and it's also under review by MEPA and part of the state review. So just starting with existing conditions, so in the first step of our study, we took a comprehensive view of existing conditions, including traffic counts at all our study area, study area intersections and roadways. We also take a comprehensive crash history for each of those intersections, and then we do capacity analysis throughout the study area to see sort of what our baseline is and how those intersected are operating, how much delay vehicles typically incur under existing conditions. From there, we evaluate future conditions, which includes a historic growth rate and other proposed projects in the area. Because it's a mast DOT study, we follow MastDOT guidelines, which has us project out seven years into the future. So we do a seven-year projection to get to 2031 conditions without the project, which we call our no build. From there, we get into our trip generation projections, which I'll cover in a subsequent slide, and then we get to trip distribution, where are those vehicles coming from, going to, and then we add that traffic onto the no build to get our 2031 build condition with the project. From there, we actually just do a capacity analysis again for no build and build conditions, and we compare the difference between those two conditions to identify any impacts between the no build and builds.
Right, Eric?
So our study area includes nine intersections, which includes the four site driveways. The property intersections are along Main Street, starting at the Anafford and Fattan North Farm off-ramps to the north and all the way down to Clearfond Road and along to the south. Because this is a residential project, our analysis period is focused mainly on year hours, which are 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. As I mentioned, trip generation is a key part of the project, and how do we do that? We rely on the Institute of Transportation and Intergovernmental Trip Generation Manual, which is essentially our database of traffic counts and various light uses. In our case, we're dealing with multifamily housing. So for our particular project, which is 200 units, we have a projection from IT that is 76 peak-hour trips during the weekday morning and 78 peak-hour trips during the weekday evening. Just a quick summary.
Could I ask you just a pause? So this is, that, those things just related to the 200 units?
Yes. Yes, to extend this, the overall traffic study contains everything, but for this area, I just isolated the trips that are associated with this project.
It'd be good to have that data more. Sherri Terst coming in and on. Sherri.
So in terms of traffic study results, again, we analyzed the existing conditions to get our baseline, the 2031 no build to get that future rejection without the project, and then 2031 build conditions with the project. When I mentioned capacity analysis, it's essentially an evaluation of the level of service at each intersection. Level of service is a grading system A through F that takes into account how much delay vehicles experience on average. When we compare the no build to build conditions, the results show that the project will result in minimal impact during those deep hours. In terms of recommendations at this point, as I mentioned, we're still undergoing peer review as well as MEPA review, and our recommendations at this point include a comprehensive transportation demand management program, which is really geared towards trying to reduce the amount of traffic that will be generated by the site. The details of that have got to be coordinated through the peer review as well as the MEPA process, but some of the examples include providing information on alternate modes of transportation, providing bike racks on sites if you could use other modes of transportation. There's also a proposal for a private car service for the assisted living and independent living memory care residence, which will reduce the amount of traffic that those components generate. Then we'll post sort of annual mobility management education for residents, so they know what the other options are as opposed to using signal to vehicles. Also, as part of the MEPA process and MastDOT review, we're typically required to do a transportation monitoring program. So six months after occupancy, we'll come back and we'll do traffic counts at these intersections to sort of check our projections and see if they're highs, they're low, and revisit anything we might need to revisit based on the results that we monitor. So those, those will be continuous 24-hour count cell inside driveways, and then peak-hour traffic movement counts at some select intersection, and we'll report that data back to the town and MastDOT as part of the process.
And that?
I'll end it off. Seepa?
Good evening, everyone. Bill Madden, landscape architect from Bardy Design. As John mentioned early on, you know, we want to give you guys context for the master plan, and in any successful landscape, it's important to sort of recognize sort of how all these systems and parts and pieces relate to each other, and that's sort of the natural sort of condition. The other part of this is sort of how do we establish a sense of community for Lakeville? And that's almost equally important. And so we wanted to start with the master plan and just talk about the parts and pieces of this, and then we're going to share the experience of what the master plan is going to feel like and how we integrate that into the multi-housing site. So John walked through the sort of the master plan, parts and pieces, and Brittany did as well in terms of the landscape. There's a series of retention basins, there's tree-lined streets, there's a public trail, a natural trail that creates porosity through the site. It starts here at the dog leg, and it connects to the upper end of the site as well. So the concept with the natural trail was that firstly, creating transparency or connectivity through the site, but also providing opportunities for the Lakeville residents to experience the wetman environment. So this is a commitment from us to the town and to the project. There's a series of retention basins, so we're thinking about the ecological impacts of collecting stormwater and how we can sort of use that and amplify that from a landscape standpoint. And also, too, in terms of the existing butters that are here, the screening of views onto this parcel will be reported. It was sort of funny at the second meeting that you guys had tonight, we were talking about dog parks and the idea of dog parks. Currently, we Currently, we have two dog parks as part of this, and that was really generated from the public meetings that we had as well. So there's a, there's a dog park located here as well as up here. So we've sort of planked them on the master members.
Where the theme of the work at?
And so in terms of like, you know, we've been talking a lot about numbers and sort of logistics of the site, I also want to think about like, what is the experience of the entire parcel, the project itself? Not just the multi-housing space, but the tree-lined streets will be part of the master plan as well as the multi-housing site. The ideas of sort of resting and gathering in the landscape. A more of an ecological sensitivity to how we develop the site and the notion of integrating meadows and moan lawns. You can, you can imagine this close to the wetland. There's a significant leaching field that's located on the site, and we're looking to use that as an opportunity to create a central green or place space for the residents. Fire retention basins, not just an engineered structure, but also have an idea of sort of unifying the town and this development.
Our dog parks.
And in terms of the multi-housing site itself, we've sort of broken down the landscape into three parts. And so we've described these sort of lawn spaces. There's collection sort of areas or areas of outdoor gathering and courtyards in between the architecture. There is ample screening, and it's not necessarily to sort of create a physical barrier, but it's about creating a visual barrier between the, the road system that's here as well as the parking lot that's here. We're working with conservation quite closely right now in terms of creating a plant palette that would be thoughtful in terms of the natural, the native plant species that are selected as well as highly functioning in terms of screening. We're planting canopy trees to reduce urban heat island effect for the parking area as well as creating a canopy or re-engaging the sort of the canopy condition that's here along the wetland, along the nature trail. And just to point out in terms of detail, this is the location of the dog park that's relatively close to the street connected via side hops.
So as I mentioned, this is the first hearing in a series of hearings here in front of the zoning boarding edition. As I mentioned, we're also in front of the planning board for the two other portions of the development, as far as the conservation commission. In addition, we're also under review by MIPA, which includes review from the Department of Energy Resources, Mast D O T, D E P, and the like. So this is the start of this review, and we look forward to, to work with you all. And thanks for bearing with us through that rather little presentation. We appreciate it. What inclusive. I don't think you left anything out. So.
It's the goal. At this point, one question and not in particular to this, but it's always nice to have a reference point to start from because their public developments you guys have done that we did, you know, a lot of times, a lot of times, conditions come before and say, listen, we've done something in this community or that community, which kind of shows us what it looks like at the end.
So for, for Rhino, we've never done a multi-community development on our own individually. However, that was part of the intention of bringing such a large project team and such a professional group together. I mean, T A T. has buildings that they could show across Massachusetts and greater New England. You know, all of these groups, Brittany and her team have worked on a substantial amount of projects similar to this one in nature. We have partnered with Wingate Senior Living on the senior living portion of the development. So they have property across the state and Rhode Island as well that we can provide as sort of feedback.
Okay. I'll work it up to the board first, then I'm going to, it's council of mechanics. Everybody have an initial? Again, I'm speaking details, so.
Ben, this speaker will connect me because.
Somebody?
How do you mean?
Right now, our mechanical electrical plumbing design is under review by Department of Energy Resources. We've modeled a couple of different avenues in our preferred path, laydowns and all-electric design for this building. So that's what we're proceeding with at the moment.
Big.
So in regards to the traffic, I mean, that's probably going to be the biggest sticking portray. One. You're saying the main primary, so when you, but like you use where primary access was the dog leg, right?
So the expectation is that traffic will flow out of that primary as well as main?
Yes, and even now.
They make turn onto main more fair to, they want to go.
At that point, I'm trying to remember, is that street, is main as that for the latest? It is doubt.
No, two lanes.
Yeah, it'd be all the way down to the soft side. So it's actually being a bridge street. So be my follow question. It's between the funeral and the, and the storage.
Correct.
So adjacent to the storage, right?
Yeah. So in this, in this slide here.
It's not a problem, and bridge is a little bit off.
This, yeah, this building in the, this building here is the storage facility. This building here is the funeral home. So it sort of splits the difference between the two. Bridge Street is approximately, call it, right here.
Yep. You come out of Bridge Street, you just, you're right with us right there, right?
No, I understand. So when you talked about the, the grading of the intersection, right? Did that take into account for only the ingress and hot ingress at that location in conjunction with Bridge Street? Like, what was the, when you said you anticipated the grade to be okay, well, the new is initially in there as which intersection, not like. So that, yeah, that will be on that side. And that's the H F B C intersection with thanks for that driveway. Bridge Street was analyzed separately, because that it's a separate intersection. So usually those are analyzed separately as a study area intersection. So you're saying there's going to be no impact? There'll be no change or the lower of rate with the bill option? Yes, very minor. To those areas. Yes.
The, the dots here showcase the intersections that Matt and his team study.
So that blue one right there, that's the right way. And then just to bottom of that is Bridge Street.
So should I infer that the difference in colors for green to blue is whether it's your.
Those are new intersections. So that is a new intersection on Main Street, but blue to the norm is the new driveway on Route seventy man.
Thanks. Eric. Anyone stood? Chris? Jeff? I meant in general, if you had a quiet response. David?
I don't. I don't, thank you.
Oh, I guess. How many, how many elevators, elevator bikes do you have?
There is, there are two elevators, one core.
Okay.
Try to navigate there, show team. Yeah, it's positioned right here.
Okay.
The thought is that really the main resident entry will be through the back of the building just because of the way the parking is situated. There are other entries of the building from other access points, but the thought is that really the entrance would be actually twisted, we're the property in both of the vessels. That's it?
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments? Come on up.
Hey.
Hi.
My name's Stegan Reed. I live on Bridge Street Cross. So I have a lot of interest in this. I think this project, it's really interesting, but the driveway where it is, is, is impossible. I mean, I don't know, somebody probably drive that way, but any traffic study says this isn't quite to effect, and I think he has, you know, might want to think another look at it. One of the problems is that what you're proposing, and it's very hard to see these, these diagrams, by the way, back in, in the audience, but I think that it shows the major in and out to this development is going to be between the funeral home and the, and the.
Storage.
Okay. That makes it offset from Bridge Street. And the street, Main Street coming down goes from two, 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 two.
Two lanes.
Two lanes, thank you. I don't know why I'm frozen. Has two lanes, it goes down to one lane. The intersection of Bridge Street and Main Street is really a tough one to be on. And the other thing is, is when they did the traffic study, I'm wondering if the, if it was cranberry season, because we, living on right off Bridge Street, it's truck after truck after truck after truck. And trying to get, you know, from the CBS to our house is a major dodge, you know, try to, try to get there. So I, I just wonder, I was thinking that you were probably going to have it down him that open field where he old houses and the, you know, you could see the big hospital building, but I really think that this is, this needs some more, some more worth, or if there's going to have to be traffic improvements, because it's, it's really tough. And it's, it's tough at rush hour, but if this season with the cranberry trucks, it's, and the fact that Bridge Street is hardly invisible when you're coming down south, down mall south, just something, might as well say something now instead of when you get too far along, so.
Well, the problem, that's, that's why we have public comments.
Well, and a traffic light might be helpful, like if you have one way to, you know.
Yeah, so, it's better and different. We're, we've become very familiar with.
Okay.
Traffic issues, so.
Well, I thank you for your time.
You're welcome. So just to make a couple of comments, as far as a traffic light goes, that's dictated by the state as far as, you know, what, what would have to be, as far as traffic load number of vehicles and whatnot. So if the state turns around and says, listen, yeah, you got to put a traffic light in, you can. Even if they, a petition decided, we want to do it anyways, the state won't allow them to do it unless it means a minimum threshold. So well, really is no option there. As far as their traffic study, our peer review is going to review their traffic study. So.
Right across the street from Bridge Street is an old overgrown access to the hospital building. And I was, I was thinking that might be the easiest way to do it, but.
The lights kind of be on that console, but you may, they comment on public records, so the petitioners heard it and they can always consider it. Unfortunately, we can't really force them to, to do anything outside of what we put within our purview. And again, we will make sure that the traffic study is reviewed by our peer review, and they, and they will comment that there's any errors or any inaccuracy, even if anything needs to be changed. You know, Pelisson, we'll ask them politely, but I'm basically saying, we'll tell them they have to change it if they would to, so.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Come on up.
Hello. Ian Higgins, twenty-four Main Street. And I've lived in the area for over forty years. So I've seen a lot of changes in the traffic. Bridge Street is not only used during the cranberry season in a busy way, it's used that way all year round because the eighteen-wheelers use it as a cut through from Route twenty-eight because they don't want to make the turn at the four corners. So the traffic on one oh five right now is horrendous. They speed. I know you did a traffic study, but those of us that live in the area, you know, we see what it's like, and it isn't just during commuter times in the morning and afternoon. Also, I know you'll probably be issuing some, an order of conditions at some point for this project. I hope it would include bonding. You're giving me a funny look.
I'm listening. You've commented, and at the end, if we can make comments, I know that I made.
I think that's kind of standard for big projects in a town is bonding. Also, where are you, where are you sourcing your water from?
You can address that if you want.
Taunton Water.
They've approved you?
We have had conversations with the Taunton Water Department as well as the Select Board. It would be the Select Board to approve our allocation that we have presented to them and had initial discussions with them.
And you're waiting for approval?
That's correct. We're waiting to get through our process with the zoning board and with the planning board before officially making our request to the Select Board.
Okay.
They would need access to public water supply because of the project they're doing.
Oh, sure.
So if Congress says no, or they don't have a public water supply, they're kind of, they're dead in the water. And that's it.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt. Hang on, Mr. Scott, this is, come on up.
I apologize for my dress. I was a moment, had completely forgotten about this. The, the light.
I know.
Dick Scott, Lakeville. And I've only lived here forty-six years, but I was around when the zoning for this was put together. And I'm very encouraged by what I see, and I'm even more encouraged to hear that we're discussing the possibility of a forty R. as well as forty B. Is that correct?
That's, they're having those discussions.
Good. Because I think that would be a very nice thing for Lakeville. I recall when our state senator and our state representative indicated that there was funding to do the required serpent study to get a light on Bridge Street. And I know there's been a fatality since that money was set aside. So I'm really concerned about Bridge Street, but I'm also concerned about Vaughn. One of the reasons I'm concerned about Vaughn is because at certain times of the day, I no longer go Route seventy-nine to twenty-eight. I go through Captain's Way and go to Bridge Street and come through. And just to mix it up, every now and then, I go down the Vaughn side, and because of the way the traffic comes from the left and the traffic comes from the right, I don't know what your study shows, but I know personally, I spend more time at that intersection than any other place in Lakeville. Okay, so the Bridge Street light might create an opportunity, but Vaughn has, I've been told, anecdotally, has numerous accents at that location too. So those two locations are very, very important. You picked up on something that, that I talked about the last time we had a project for this location, and that was the fact that at seventy-nine, it goes from two lanes down to one lane with a turn at Bridge Street. Right after that, it goes down to one lane. And what was discussed at the time was the possibility of turning lanes so that at least one lane could keep moving. And at the time, the proponents said, we don't own that whole corridor. No matter what D O T. says, it just seems to me logically that if I were to look at a traffic problem from seventy-nine to Vaughn Street, anything you could do to keep that path moving would be appropriate. So while we're going to have the peer reviews, I appeal to some common sense to look at the possibility of what we could do. The light isn't given. It's got to happen. I know it's been discussed. It seems to be held up somewhere, but it's been a long time, and at the point that we're having fatalities, we need to do something at the Bridge Street location. How much authority you guys have, I recognize, but it seems to me that since we're looking at the forty B., forty R. component and the rest of it at build out, somewhere along the line, we got to, we got to address that. And I'm sure other people would talk about eighteen and one oh five also as being, but it really is that whole corridor from Route eighteen all the way to twenty-eight. Okay, so that's got to be looked at real hard, especially in light of the fact that they're bringing out different locations. That may help, but it's already an untenable situation, in my opinion. One thing that I am concerned about is there is no. One thing that I am concerned about is there is no security for walk off and walk on, on the Rush Pond side. The last project talked about a burn. This project, I don't believe is gonna have a burn, but whatever the landscaping is, I think what was said was it was not security, but it was for screening. And given some of the anecdotal history, talking about the apartment buildings across the street, I know the people that I've spoken to on Rush Road, do you have concerns about walk off from that location on, onto that residential area? I'm not sure what the solution is. I'd like to think of fence, but I at least like to have it considered. The last thing is, you guys are gonna be looking at the 40B part of it and issuing yours. And then the planning board is gonna be looking at the other two components. And I'm, and I'm hoping that there'll be some communications so that it takes a holistic, comprehensive look so that we cover all the bases. Um, I don't know, did the MIPA go in, go for the whole campus or just the 40B part?
It, it views the entire pocket as whole.
So having said that, since you're gonna be having a peer review, and since the planning board is gonna be having a peer review, I think since the MIPA is already submitted, I think that the last time MIPA was submitted, there were a lot of things that really didn't get looked at, in my opinion, until very, very late in the project. And I think it's a missed opportunity because the whole idea of environmental impact reports is to make sure that all the important stuff is covered. Okay, so I'm just saying, when your peer review does the reviews, I think one of the things he has to include in that is the, the report submitted, that it's been fully. And other than that, I'm, I'm real happy with the project if we can address the security, if we can address the traffic. And if this were to go from a 40B to 40R, at East Lakeville would get some financial benefit. Thank you.
40B to 40Rs out of our needs.
I understand that.
Um, Amy, just to clarify, when it comes to traffic, and I understand, you know, as was referenced even by this board, that's probably gonna be the issue most people are going to be talking about because, yes, I've been in Lakeville most of my life and it's a lot different going down Main Street than Houston. Haven't said that. Just to clarify, it's, that's Route 105. Anything that's done as far as whether it's lights, whether it's, you know, two lanes, any changes to that, did we have any influence or any per review over it other than asking our peer review to make sure that everything is accurate and making sure there's no opportunity to, to go to the state to ask them for any changes?
Correct. We can, we could ask the, the applicant to work with the state.
The petition the state to say we like to use, but we, you know, unfortunately, this, we don't have any, anything significant.
And we don't have the traffic report to find us, but it sounds like one of these intersections might be very, very bad now, which means the, we, the applicant is not required to improve a already existing problem.
Correct. You've asked that before. If you have, if you have an intersection that's already in F and doing this keeps it an F, it's already an F. If you, if it creates an intersection that wasn't V and this project makes it an F, now we have something to consider, listen, you need to do something about. But just for the record, I, you do, I did make notes there, I wanna make sure that we incorporate any and all intersections within a reasonable area in the impact on, on the traffic there. So as far as fencing goes and whatnot, you've made your comment, they can decide if they wanna incorporate that in, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to look for a minimum standard. I'm trying to use a common sense standard that says that if we, for example, have the selectmen, Board of Selectmen, after you get your peer review, we say, okay, nothing's required, but it makes sense to consider. I don't think the DOT, uh, Bob would object to us at least expressing an opinion. So I guess what I'm leading up to is if the zoning board appeals, if the planning board, if the Board of Selectmen were to encourage DOT as well, because I already plan on calling my state representative and expressing my concerns, that it'll get a fair shake, okay? So again, I'm, I'm not trying to make them do anything that's unreasonable. I'm just saying, I know for a fact that if there were four lanes going across there, it would keep traffic flowing as opposed to a dead stop. And right now, it's coming from both directions. 79, light gives you one opportunity, 18 light gives you another opportunity. And I know that there have been accidents at Vaughn Street, not just at Bridge Street.
I'm just, come on up, Bob. Actually, hang on, John, the woman had her hand up and then you can come up.
I'm, I'm losing info, will relate. And I was wondering if there was any, the main traffic on that, that load, that's made a constant, you know, right?
She was talking about the road coming out of the hospital site, the original entrance. What's gonna happen to that road? I, I don't think it's necessarily part of this project, but if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can address it. It is part of the, the senior living portion of the development, which is under review by the planning board. I encourage you to come and, one of us here, and we're scheduled for next month. But to address your question, that's a loading entry. It'll really be used relatively infrequently for pickup and drop offs for food delivery and being, uh, simple.
Thank you.
All right, come on up.
Anthony, I'm very reading Farcelli Roads, Lakeville. Other side of the storage, you know, there's the new apartment complex, two buildings, four units per building, a couple of 80 units. Bring this out of CBS, bring this out of the light before she, so in your traffic study, include a new residence of your father building, B Y 12405. And it's...
Go ahead, go ahead. So question is, did it take into account everything, even though that building isn't, those buildings aren't occupied as of yet, did it take into account of any?
Yes, we contacted the town, Lakeville, as well as the town in middle borough, and sort of got an history of projects that are on the books in the future and incorporated that traffic into our future conditions.
Thank you. I'd say. We said something that, that kind of meaning stuff, we were, that driveway that used to go in, it's all over the room now. You're saying that's gonna be an access for food deliveries, living vans and stuff like that?
He's talking about further down, next to Eastern Bank. Right? That driveway that goes in, that's for the assisted living, not this project. And it's basically gonna be the trucks that come in and not moving vans necessarily, but people will come in a few times a day and make deliveries to the assisted living, so correct? That's something to do with this project. It's gonna be a low, it's gonna be a low volume.
Down by the hos, right, by the pharmacy? Okay, thank you.
No, not by the pharmacy, heading more towards, mainly at the center, like built on foot, where, where the population is. So if you're heading down on your right before you get to Eastern Bank.
Okay.
If you're heading to town hall.
Oh, you're heading to where?
To town hall, to the library.
To the library, okay.
You're heading here on your right.
But that, but the only driveway you know that's there is the one that's kind of a dirt road. And if you were to feed through the bushes, you'd end up, you know, it's not a dirt road.
I don't see it on screen.
I can't.
The sheriff, you don't...
These are really hard to see from back there.
So I, I believe the, the driveway that you're referring to, that is actually essentially a, a, right in connection with Bridge Street, that's, that's beating through the dirt path, I think you're referring to is, is actually not part of our property. So you don't own that property, unfortunately.
Right next to that old house.
Yes, unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, we don't. Trust me, it would make all of the conversations that we're having here a hell of a lot easier if we did own that piece of property.
Thank you.
The driveway that I believe she was referring to in previous comment is the existing paved currently out.
Yep.
So, and Lori Lane is directly across from that. So as you can see, it'll, it'll really be a free minimum for you to see it on drive.
Any other comments from the public? Any other additional questions or comments from the board? Mel's too good. Amy, anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, so at this point, and Amy will, for, needs to do anything else, but we have this out to peer review. And at this juncture, I just think we need to start getting some feedback and peer review. And I think public traffic is the biggest issue, so we will see if there's any way they can have that possibly reviewed and prepared for next meeting, so we can take the one that's gonna have the most questions first, and, and we will continue on at that point. Do you have anything additional you wanna add before we continue to hearing?
That's all I have. Appreciate your time this evening. We'll be able to look out for those peer review comments and come prepared to speak to them next year.
You may even have to have council talk, how about that? All right, we'll get to continue, right Amy?
You are. I have the, I have the 180 days from March 18th.
From now, right?
From today, yeah.
If you don't mind, just beyond traffic peer review, are there other peer reviews that we should be prepared to speak on that the board intends to pursue?
Unless anybody else has anything else, I think traffic is, is the one we really wanna focus on. Once we get beyond that, it seems like no one is opposed to the project or they've accepted it is the better way to put it. Um, for traffic, it seems to be the one that we're gonna have to make sure we go all right and cross that piece.
But I think environmental partners is gonna look at engineering.
Oh, they're looking at everything, yeah, they're looking at everything.
Just wanna make sure that that's included and that that's...
It is, it's all.
Yeah, every, my point is everything's included, but I'm gonna tell them in prioritizing, let's do traffic first.
Totally, totally.
We have enough time.
Totally, we should, just wanted to...
We need to, we'll ask you to extend the 180 days, but if we do this the right way, we should be able to get it done.
I'm all for that. I appreciate it.
Do you have a question?
Just asking captain, do we have an electronic copy of this to, to talk?
I don't think we do, but I'm pretty sure if we ask them to give us an electronic copy, we can do that.
Just send to us.
Absolutely.
Okay. Who wanna make that motion to continue to?
I make the motion.
Continue to?
October 17th.
Is that right? October 17th.
October 17th.
We have a second, second discussion, all in favor. I oppose, motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, last couple agenda items, we have some minutes from June 20th. 24 approved, correct?
I guess. I'll make a motion for the minutes.
With that one, you took the summer off. You're not at any... All right, so we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
We want you to watch the Patriots second half, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Minutes approved. Next meeting is, well, no, it isn't next meeting. We have next meeting posted, it's October 15th, but our continuance for that seventh hearing is until December. So our next meeting is October 17th back here. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next adjourn.